They're simply wanting to negotiate for our land.
Yeah. So, as you can imagine, this is a multi-agency endeavor. Many agencies, public and private, working together on this. We have our county councils that are involved in this and working with the SF Public Utilities Commission, helping to come up with the draft MOU that we will then make specific for us and for our agency. But, yeah, there's a lot of different agencies involved in this, both in the permitting, as well as the planning.
Question about the cleanliness of the water. How is it filtered? Explain, would you be able to explain that?
The water is very high quality, the groundwater in Daly City and in this west, greater west side basin is high quality, needs very little treatment. It's disinfected to meet state standards. But, and some of the utilities to the south do manganese removal, which is a naturally occurring mineral that's not needed here in Daly City. So, other than, and then fluoridate, it'll be fluoridated. So, other than that, those are the only two treatments that are required.
I had a question, I think you answered that, but the question that was in my mind when I was looking at this was how, you know, it talks about banking the water, putting it, putting it in, and you're saying simply by transferring so that they're using the wells less when there is ample water in the hetch, etchy and surface water systems and not tapping it then is how it would, how it would bank that water?
Correct.
Yeah, as opposed to some way of creating more, you know, run up more, more water into the storage.
Right, right. Other utilities sometimes inject the water or use spreading ponds. But this is even a more, a simpler way of just having, reducing pumping during normal and wet years lets the natural recharge that builds up in the basin, just to let that accrue. And then that can be stored for recovery in the dry years.
Okay, yeah, because I know there have been issues in the past with the amount of pumping out for the golf courses, especially at Lake Merced that has negatively impacted that aquifer. So, that seems like that's, it's crucial that that obviously is as a vital part of your plan is that you get those people off of the pumps and the wells during wet seasons.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have one.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the School Board Directors, Patrick Swedland, Director of Daly City Department of Water and Wastewater Resources, Chair Douglas, that's why they went to recycled water back in 2005.
Right.
The city council's public policy toward the west side basin aquifer has been to preserve it for municipal drinking water purposes. So, by getting the golf courses off the aquifer, that frees it up. As Greg pointed out, we have been, this is not our first rodeo, if you will, with regard to the conjunctive use. This is not a good year to talk about available surface water supply, but we have been banking the water since 2003. So, when you look and see Greg's intent to get over 60,000 acre feet of water, today we're about 40% there. We have 20,000 acre feet of water stored within the basin when we've been able to go off the wells, use more of the hetchy supply, and then bank that water. The quality of water is frankly excellent. Basically, all we are doing is the water will go, as you can see from some, from the, from the well, it'll then enter into the existing Daly City facilities and actually be pumped at the Westlake Pump Station, which is to the east of Ben Franklin School. So, the water will go in and then from that portion, it'll be treated. When we say treated, basically the water comes into a sump and then basically is fluoridated to match the water we're getting already that's fluoridated, and then chloraminated, and then sent out the distribution system. So, with regard to San Mateo County's involvement, the real involvement, we have the State Department of Public Health. They'll be issuing the permit based upon the water quality. San Mateo County may have an oversight because it is in the county, but then it goes into the distribution system that serves all of us. So, we, you know, when I say all of us, what's that?
We'll share with you.
You will?
Yeah.
That's so generous, Marie, thank you. But basically, the, the sharing aspect is Cal Water, which is, serves the Broadmoor, also has its pumping stations down south of ours that we'll then bring up. And then with regard to the sharing of ours, we also have emergency interconnects between our respective Bradley Street. So, if there is that emergency, it really doesn't make a lot of difference to the public what molecule of water comes from where, so long as it's there.
That's true.
So, when these pictures are like rectangular, that's just like the earth, you mean?
It's just a cutaway.
It's not going to be something we can see. It's underground.
The well will be above ground because new state requirements have to have a well above ground. The wells no longer allow below ground. It has to be above grade, that's the new state requirements.
Is that like the one you have already by Ben Franklin?
Correct. Well, no, no, it's, it's, it's more like the well next to us at the Westlake Pump Station. This is not the first time we've been on school property pumping water. You'll recall well three, which is to the north end, remains a monitoring well. That's the last of wells that could be placed below ground. They need to be now placed above ground to meet the state requirements.
So, will that be, how big is that well going to be on, on our school property?
Well, the outline of the well itself is the fence line, 20 by 30.
20 by 30 is the fenced enclosure.
If you want to see what the well looks like, what we anticipate the well will look like, just drive to the east side of the school, to the Westlake Pump Station, you'll see the Westlake well.
Yeah, I've been there.
And that's basically what you're, that's the infrastructure you're basically going to be seeing.
Okay, okay.
So, when we're, our superintendent is putting together this MOU, what are we getting out of, I mean, I know, I know we're getting water, but are, are we asking for money for the use of the land? Are we getting money for the use of the water? I don't really understand that part of it.
I think Ms. Kessler can explain what some of the considerations are that we will attempt to ensure are included, but if you want to touch on those.
Doesn't have to be extensive.
Yeah, I think we have a couple.
No, it's not like we're going to get this ongoing money. They're going to fix the track up, they're going to put a gate in, in, in the road. And then in the MOA, we're making sure that it's not going to cost the district any money to do when they do this. And should the well be abandoned later on, that it needs to be put back to its original state. So, basically, we're, there are, you know, some dress ups for us and with the track and such. But what we're doing is really protecting the district and making sure that the maintenance and the insurance and everything would be covered by them and that there would be no cost to the district.
All right, thanks.
And as for the use of the land, that's our, part of our community service.
And also to avoid an imminent domain.
Right.
Shame on you.
We can either let them use it or they'll use it.
Okay, so the.
Which we may get money for doing it that way, but it's better to be friendly.
That pump station, what, is that what you call it?
The Wesley Pump Station.
Yeah, that's right down there. Is the other one that you're going to be building, the new one, is it going to be at that same level over?
Well, what's being planned here is as described, you're, you're basically taking where a well used to be on the north end of your property, is moving it to the south end of the property on a level ground. And then you have pertinences and the piping and the valving will basically connect to the Daly City existing, you know, easements that we have that go around the building. Okay, that's where it's going to get, you know, that's where the water's going to get pumped into our facilities and then transferred into the Westlake Pump Station. It goes into a sump, the sump is where we do the treatment, and after the treatment, that's where it gets pumped out in the distribution system.
So, does that in any way going to affect the area on Wildwood and Ellis, where Daly City owns a house there that's.
Will not, this project will not.
There won't be any going in and out there or?
No, no. The water actually goes out behind the easement.
Not the water, people, like trucks.
No.
It's going to come on the other side.
Be on our side.
Thank you. Have to protect those people over there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Through other questions, through your staff, through our department, we're happy. We've been in partnership now since 1996 within this basin, so this is a good stage to be at. We're actually going to be serving the public that we jointly serve and address the water supply in California the way I think most people want us to. We're breaking all those barriers and being as efficient as we can. Thank you with your assistance.
Well, I want to thank you, I know you do a lot of work.
Thank you all for, for that, that was, that was illuminating.
Very.
Okay. Interesting, interesting. And we'll keep moving right along here. I don't know, our food service update, Mr. Hale. Thank you for your patience.
Awful things tonight, don't we?
We do. And then we're running about 10 minutes behind schedule.
How much?
About 10 minutes.
Looking forward to another slide deck?
I'm sure we do.
Wish my presentation was exciting as groundwater.
Well, the water and food go together.
As you say, without the food, the water is inadequate.
And vice versa.
Exactly.
So, I want to thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. I will try to move as quickly as possible. I've got, had a lot more to talk about, but I tried to condense it down to just the kind of the pertinent things for this year. I want to thank my supervisor, District Manager for Aramark, Fred Ellis, for being here tonight as well. Is it the, okay. So, this year we had several things going on. At the beginning of the year, Aramark was able to assist the district in the free and reduced enrollment campaign. We were able to provide some funds to purchase some raffle items, iPads, Great America, tickets, tickets to Six Flags, things like that to drive the application process for free and reduced students. We were able to add, we had to add onsite heating and holding facilities at General Pershing. We were, we walked into this school year with an additional 40 meals. They had added two additional classes that we were not, we did not know about last year. So, we are at the point where we were cooking down at the central kitchen and delivering the, the food. Now, we are delivering the food and they're actually warming up and serving at General Pershing. We're looking next year to add in another classroom there, so we will be certainly at the limits of being able to do it at the central kitchen and sending out hot foods. We were able to finish the painting with, at the multipurpose room at FDR. It was a long process to, to get it done, but I think it, it really brightens up that room. It was the, the dark wood paneling, now it's got some nice bright, bright colors on it. We had to say goodbye to one of our, our food service clerk with Aramark, and we decided that we were going to replace that position with a food service assistant, which will allow me to have more support out at the schools, rather than just me being there. I have that assistant that can help with quality assurance, any site support that, that the schools would need. We met with a lot of the frequent customers for catering, and we created some new menus that I think we kind of hit the edge of the same sandwiches, the same offerings. So, we, we took some input, some requests, and created a whole new, a whole new menu, still providing a good quality product, lower than what you could find outside. Since the school district is not allowed by law to, to donate products, food, things like that, Aramark was able to step in and we were, we were happy to support some local charities. I'd mentioned the free and reduced application campaign, Health and Wellness Fair, some events with the Daly City Partnership, teacher appreciation, pancake breakfasts, to name a few. And we were able to give the district back this year monetary rebate in excess of $9,000 for manufacturer agreements that we have with Aramark, that we purchased their products. At the end of the year, we, by a certain amount, they're able to rebate us back, that goes directly to the, to the school district. This year was the year that the new regulations went into effect for breakfast. Obviously, last year it was the lunch, this year it's, it's breakfast. We increased our hot entree offerings this year. We were doing one day a week on Wednesday last year. This year, we were able to do it two days a week. We anticipated that we would see some drop off of the participation with the new regulations, so we, we wanted to make sure that we, we had some new options available. We eliminated the sugary cereals that we had talked about at the end of last school year. Some of those would be like Lucky Charms, Frosted Flakes, Captain Crunch, obviously that. Perceived as sugar laden.
Just perceived as sugar laden, I'm sorry, those are sugar laden.
It's disgusting.
The, the current breakfast cereals that we do use all comply with the, the state and federal standards.
What are they?
The cereals?
Yeah, just on, if you know what it is.
Rice Krispies, Cheerios, Honey Nut Cheerios, Corn Flakes, off, offhand, those are some of the ones that.
Good, without all that sugary, okay, thank you.
Some of the new menu items that we were able to add for the breakfast program were some mini pancakes, Whole Grain Ultimate Breakfast Rounds. We, we've found a really nice beef sausage patty, turkey sausage, on, on a bagel, breakfast pizzas, and breakfast burritos.
What is a ultimate breakfast round?
I think it's a, is it a bagel?
It's a whole wheat, a whole grain.
Bun, like?
Was that like an?
Almost like a, like a cookie, but it's a, it's not a cook, it's a whole grain cinnamon flavored, actually pretty, pretty decent.
What about breakfast pizza, what is that?
Pizza?
It's, it's a whole, whole wheat dough, cheese, turkey sausage, I believe there's some scrambled egg on it as well.
Oh, really? All right.
We, we served all that at that, with the teachers training.
Beef sausage, beef and turkey sausage for that matter. And I know it gets very technical, but with the population we have, we have a lot of Islamic students, and if the beef has pork casing, that excludes a lot of people from being able to eat that.
We are very sensitive to the pork, pork, using pork products here. We try to stay away from all pork products. That's why I, I put beef sausage. It's actually a beef sausage patty, not a traditional link sausage.
Okay, beautiful, okay.
So, we're, we're very conscious about, and, and actually I'll, in some later slides, I'll show you where we actually will indicate on the menu if it is a pork product.
Thank you.
For lunch, we really started looking at our operations and, and the, the time that it took the students to get through the, the line. We started at some of our larger schools to change our procedures to, to speed up the, the collecting of the names. Before it was, you'd, you'd have to ask the child their name, you'd type in their name, was really cumbersome. Now, we got, we have a system in which they come through by class, we flip into a book, there's a barcode, child just gives us a number. I'm number 20 in Smith's class, scan it, boom, move to the next one. It, it allowed us, on average, to save each meal period anywhere from three to five minutes, which is, is pretty big considering how quickly you have to move those kids through the line. Aramark this year came with a new, more robust quality assurance and food safety program, which we actually report on our internal, internal measures and websites, where we actually go out to the sites and we'll do these, these quality assurance and food safety inspections, constant monitor and making sure that the, the products are held at the right temperature, delivery logs are there, chemical logs, that the staff is trained and knows how to use different pieces of equipment, things like that. We looked at the middle schools this year and refreshed the service flow, bought some new service pieces to display the, the à la carte offerings at the middle schools, and just the overall operations. There was a, I wish I had some pictures to show you, but there was a, a lot of cardboard boxes displaying our foods, and it just, it drove me to the point where we, we have to do something here. Next year, obviously, the, the new standards come in that, that will, will affect the, the à la carte program. So, now's the time, let's refresh that, let's get the students ready for the new changes. While we were doing that, we had the option of continuing to sell what we were selling and then make the change next year with the new regulations. We decided that it would make sense now to go ahead and start doing the new regulations this year as, as to what we were selling. So, all of the items that were, we were sold this year are going to be compliant next year. So, I'm, I'm hoping that with the, the new regulations, we won't see a huge drop off in our à la carte sales. And we did more, with, with some of the new menu items, we did a lot more scratch cooking at, at the, the central kitchen, marinating meats for two, three days, cooking from scratch, you know, cooking the, the pastas, cooking the rices, things like that. And, and it just lends to a much better product.
That's good.
Some of the new menu items this year, we, we listened to the student feedback, you know, kids want the mac and cheese, so we've, we've got mac and cheese on the menu, Asian chicken and noodle bowl, Asian vegetable and noodle bowl, grilled chicken Alfredo and vegetable Alfredo. Those are all very popular new items this year. The supper program, the supper program, we added some new items, lime cilantro chicken salad, build your own pizza bagels, chicken dippers, some Colby and Jack cheese sticks, broccoli slaw, assorted fruit cups. I'll talk a little bit about our plans for the supper program, but we've, we've kind, we're at the point where we're doing a cold program and we're looking to add next year some hot entrees to, to increase some, just excitement in the program. It can only serve so many sandwiches and cold items before it just becomes redundant.
So, the chicken dippers are cold too?
Yeah. For numbers, I, I wanted to show you, on, on the far right are, it's 2013, 2014. We, I broke them down by free, reduced, paid, and adult meals, and then I did the à la carte sales for breakfast and lunch underneath. Those are in dollars, the meals are in actual meals sold. As you can see, we, we dropped a little bit in the breakfast, but we actually increased in our, our lunch sales. And it, and I wanted to show you the three years because it, it's important to see that last year we, we went, we had the, the lunch regulations, and you can see from 2011, 12, the following year, we dropped in lunch, but we went up in breakfast. So, it, it, I'm hoping next year, once the students are used to the new regulations, we can, we will be able to get that breakfast participation back up and it'll recover like it has this year with the lunch.
Is it dinner for the after-school program stuff or?
That's correct. So, looking forward to 2014, 15, we have the new USDA regulations coming in. At the back of your packets are, is a very detailed description of what the, the new regulations are, makes it a little bit easier to understand. The good news is that we're already doing that with the, the changes that we had made at the, at the middle schools, so it should not affect us tremendously next year. Breakfast program next year, I'd like to go from two days a week to three days serving hot food. To be able, we're, we're also looking to do more onsite preparations, onsite being at the school. So, setting up where it's applicable, smoothie bars for the students to come in and get a smoothie, some yogurt parfaits, things that we could build onsite, rather than trying to do them at the, the central kitchen, they just, you know, imagine a parfait in the back of a truck being delivered. It, it doesn't look very good by the time it gets to the school. So, we're trying to, we're going to explore some ideas to, to do those onsite. For the hot items, some, you know, breakfast sandwiches, whole grain wrap, you know, hot items. And being able to offer multiple, multiple selections, two or three options if possible. You know, we could offer a smoothie, we could offer a hot entree plus cereals or, or whatnot, to give the kids more options other than just one, one selection. We are, Aramark is developing, as we speak, a farm-to-table program that I'd really like to bring here, where on our fresh bars, our salad bars, we would have, this, this month's focus is this broccoli from this farm down in Salinas, and we could have, you know, a little write-up on the menu where this product came from, teach the, you know, had their, they're on the menus and the marketing flyers, things like that, that would talk about the health benefits of dark green, leafy vegetables like broccoli. But each, each month have something like that that would tie back into the salad bar, but also teaching about the nutritional standards of those things. So, look, we, we're going to be looking to do that program in this upcoming year. We're also looking to do hot supper meals. I, I think we're at the point where, like I had mentioned earlier, they're just, they're done with turkey sandwiches. They, they need something a little more, more heartier. And of course, to continue the point-of-sale service speed and, and really try to roll that program, the best practices that we learned this year out to the other schools. And I will leave it open for questions. In, I forgot to mention, in the back of those packets as, as well, there are sample menus for the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the supper program. And you'll see examples of our most recent, our most recent menus.
What's a strawberry bear?
Pardon me?
What's a strawberry bear?
It's a waffle graham cracker.
Oh, okay.
Bear shaped like, well, shaped like a bear.
Just wondering.
It's not a real bear.
I don't have little kids at home that, who eat that stuff, so.
Well, thank you, I think that looks like we're making progress definitely in the right direction, which really like improving the nutritional quality at breakfast. Very, very happy to see those sugar cereals go.
Yeah, and, and the, the challenge is, you know, finding the items that the kids will, will want. And not, and having variety, so making sure we have a, a good cycle menu that we're able to, to offer products, not just because they're popular, but they're, they're also healthy and they're not redundant.
Right. And you must be doing something right with the mac and cheese, because boy, when I was in school, macaroni and cheese was like the school lunch meal that you ran and hid from. So, you're doing something better if it's one the kids are asking for.
We've actually, it, it's funny, some of the responses on that particular product is that it's too cheesy.
Yeah.
It's not the powdered cheese that you add water to and that, it's not that particular brand. This is actually real cheese, has to be real cheese.
I've heard that complaint from my own children.
So, they're, they're a little, you know, it'll take some time to, to develop that palate. Thank you for letting me present tonight.
Yeah, thanks, uh, thank you, Jeff. I think it's just important for the board to recognize and the community to recognize that, um, Aramark has been providing services now, this is their fourth year, I believe. And, um, over this last four years, um, they've had to implement new regulations and different meals every year practically. We had lunch a couple of years ago, we have breakfast this year, um, supper, next year snacks, à la carts, additional fruits and vegetables and, and, um, you know, every year they've made it work. They've worked with us, they've worked with our students to try to create a menu that is attractive and that students will want to eat and, um, or purchase or, or come in and get. And I think it's been challenging for everybody, but I think Aramark has approached that challenge and, um, really, um, has been able to do a far better job than I think we could have done on our own. Their expertise that they have across the nation, these are national standards. And so they're able, able to sort of rely on sort of their national menu bank and to say, here's what's happening across the country and that this might work, um, well for our area. And I'm sure that, uh, these Asian vegetable salads and, and offerings that are very popular in Daly City, you know, can be used in Wisconsin too, I'm sure.
So when do we get to sample some of these menu items?
Well, well, let's see, we can work something out for maybe our, um, some of our all-day board retreats. Maybe we get to, get food service to cater those instead of honey baked ham.
We have done that before, but then example, had them ring us exactly what the kids get.
That's true.
As I recall, we found that they were skimpy for grown adults. But you're also, of course, welcome to go to school and buy lunch like any of the teachers.
That's true.
Obviously not right now because school's out.
I'll send you a menu on school starts so you know which day to visit.
Okay. And you can report back to the board for those of us who are less courageous. I mean, okay. Where are we here?
Item six.
There we go. Yeah, I was just saying, I turned the page and then I'm lost. The item six is the renewal of our agreement with Aramark for their consulting management services of the food service operation. As Mr. Vidal says, they've been working with us for four years now and it is time for the annual renewal of their contract if we're going to do so.
I'd like to make a mo-
I did call, oh, I did call and I want to thank Julie for giving me some of the information. So I wanted to know what was different about the contract at all because I didn't have one to compare. And so she gave me the information and I think she's going to share that with all of you too.
Yeah, okay, so, um, the contract follows the, the original contract and so this is the, the fourth addendum. And basically the original contract each year could go up by CPI. There's a fixed meal price, so every meal that they serve, that's how we determine what we're going to pay them. It's just a multiplier. And, um, that, that price can go up by CPI each year. And so they've increased it by 2.2%. And after I like reviewed it, it looks like it's really 2.4%, but, um, the, the increase is 2.2%. The guarantee is still a maximum of a hundred thousand dollar guarantee. Instead of on the profit, which is scheduled to be approximately $5,900, it's going to be break even. Last year, um, I gave a leeway of a 1% leeway, which was a $17,000 leeway because I pushed them up to, um, project more than, um, they wanted. I wanted the projections higher, so I gave them a 1% leeway. That has been removed and we've just made it at a break even. It'll be break even because of a considerable salary increase and benefits increase. And as you know, um, classified employees who work four hours or more get the full benefit. So the percentage of increase is a greater percent of the salaries there. So other than that, the contract is the same. Those are the only changes and, um, I do recommend that we move forward with them. I have been very happy with, um, Jeff's work and his dedication and his communication with me.
I also want to thank you for furnishing so much of the food for the, um, day that we were, um, the Common Core Day that we were training parents and teachers and everything. He brought a lot of stuff, so thank you that that was a, a plus. Didn't have to beg all over.
It's one of our charities.
Yeah, yeah.
For the charity.
Were there any other questions before we entertain a motion?
Go ahead, Mr. O'Teague.
I have motioned to renew the agreement with Aramark for consulting management services and food service operation for 2014, 15.
Second.
We have a tie on the second between Mr. Waters and Mr. Al. We'll give it to Mr. Waters. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That was unanimous. Okay, we're making progress, gang.
Oh, God, 25 minutes.
2014, 15 budget development presentation.
Can you talk fast, Julie? I'll do my best.
Please.
Okay, so back in March, I was here with you, um, with Sandy and giving you a presentation on the LCAP expenditures and such. And then the, uh, second interim, which I included that in the, um, multi-year projection, well, discussion of the multi-year projection. And, um, and then also the last board meeting, we had the governors may revise. And so I presented that to you and I, I told you about like, um, to be prepared. And, um, I, I feel very good about this budget. It was attached to the board agenda for the public hearing. It is ready and because, um, there were no great changes, um, it will go forward as planned. So the budget assumptions that we used, um, were to include the COLA for each of the, the current year, which is actually going to be 0.86% now. But include the COLA in all the out years into the LCFF target again. The target is not what we're getting funded, but that's our target for getting funding. And then with the LCFF gap funding, that is where we are going to get the amount we're going to get towards that target. We went over that before and I will show you another slide that actually shows our numbers with that gap funding for the current year. But, um, it's a 28.05 and actually it's going to be 28.06. That will be $1 more per student. And then in the out years, uh, we said we were doing it conservative, 7.8 and then 8.4 in the following two years. And those amounts are going to really, if the state, um, follows through with what they said, it'll be 30.39% for 15, 16. It was supposed to be 33.95, but they've revised that down to 30.39. And in, um, 16, 17, it was at 21.67. It's going to be at 19.5 according to what they, um, they plan on. So as you can see, our multi-year projection is very, very conservative. And then as for our ADA, we're using our current year P2 and we're considering that flat in the out years, that's also somewhat conservative. And then our unduplicated student count for our, our supplemental and concentration grants is going to be nearly, um, 74%. So that's where those funds are coming from and we're planning that in all the out years. There's no real reason really at this point to think that that would change. And of course, as we have our campaign that Food Services, um, Aramark has supported last year, I believe they're planning on supporting it next year as well, with the prizes for, um, the drawing, for who would win from the campaign about getting everybody to apply for free and reduced, whether they, um, whether they qualify or not. And of course, we only, only the ones that qualify will get it. But we want everybody to apply because the few kids, the extra kids that qualify in time to meet our seabeds date will increase our, um, unduplicated student count. Included as well is step in column for all out years. And then included in this budget is a negotiated salary and benefits increase that, um, we, we have just added to, um, all of our salary schedules. So that would be for 14, 15. And of course, that amount goes out into the future, but it's not increased in the future except for as it, step in column is drawn on that. So, um, after the 14, 15 increase, then it remains flat after that at this point and we will negotiate that in the future. And then the nice surprise that the governor gave us about the STIRS and the employer's contribution, as you know, the state and the employee contribution has also increased. However, in our budget, we only budget for the district contribution increase. So in that budget is, um, an increase from 8.25% of the current year to 9.5% uh, next year. And then in the out years, increasing, um, by the amounts that the state is saying at this point we will be responsible for. So that will be included in, that is included in the budget as well as the increase in per's contribution by the, um, by the district. And as you know, out here, way out in 2020, 21, um, STIRS will go up to an increase for the district of 19.1% will be the district's contribution level. And in per's, 20.1%. But that's quite a, some years out and more than half of that increase will already have been accounted for. At this point here, we would be adding approximately $2 million to our budget, over $2 million to our budget. And by the time we get out to 2021, it will be 3.6 million that's added. So we'll only be 1.6 million shy of fully funding the STIRS and per's contributions.
Now, does that mean also, Julie, that the employees have to match the same amount?
No, they're not matching that amount. They have a, um, on that last presentation, so it is on, online, the employees for, for per's will remain the same. For STIRS, um, they'll top out at 10 and a quarter percent for the, um, employees that have been here since before January 2013 and 9 point something percent, um, for the, the newer employees. I think maybe 9.25, 9.75, some, 9.17, I think that's what. So, um, to go over the, um, the LCFF, um, with that, first we need to determine what the target is and what the gap is. So, um, our target, um, including for our base grant amount, including our class size reduction, our, um, TIG funds and our transportation funds, those two never get increased by the COLA. They will remain flat, is, um, 46 and a half million dollars. And then we add the supplemental and concentration grants onto that and these are based on our, our current ADA. And these two combined are approximately $11 million. And that gives us our target for 14, 15 is 57 and a half million dollars. As I said, each year the target will be increased by the COLA. And then we look at what our floor is. Our floor is our funding level that we are getting this current year. And so that's 39 and a half million dollars. Well, just take one, you subtract it from the other and you have our gap. What we're supposed to be getting, what we're getting, and the difference is 18 million dollars. That's our gap. So, um, the, then it's what, what are we going to get for 14, 15 year? Well, we're going to get 28.05, actually 28.06, but the budget's going to show 28.05. We will revise it later on, uh, provided legislature actually passes this the way it is. We'll do it whatever they pass it at. So the 28.05% of this gap will be funded. So 28.05% of 18 million is the 5 million dollars. That's going to be, um, combined of the concentration supplemental and brick, uh, base grant altogether. So that comes into this amount, so we add it to the 39 million, we'll get 44 and a half million dollars. Um, and that is what is in this budget. Let me go back to that for a second. Of that 44 and a half million, um, we're categorizing 36.8 million as base grant monies and 7.7 million as supplemental and concentration grant monies. What that does, when we're fully funded and we're getting, if we were going to be fully funded this year and we were going to get the 11 million dollars for concentration and supplemental grant, that is 23.77% additional funds above the base grant amount. They have what's called the MPP, which is minimum proportionality percentage. What that means, and, and that's what that 23.77% is. So in other words, for every dollar that we spend on regular education at the base level, we have to spend another 23 point, um, 77% or cents with supplemental expenditures for the supplemental and concentration grant. So, uh, and that's when we're, we'd be fully funded. So almost 24%, right? So, um, if we spend a hundred dollars for the base, then we have to spend an additional $24 for the supplemental concentration. What we're doing this year, um, we, we would need to spend nearly 21%. The way we've got it broken out between the 36.8 million and the 7.7 million for those two different areas, it'd be 20.93%. We are spending well above that because that's what we talked about before, that we're going to fund our, our supplemental services upfront and wait for our funding to catch up. And that is why we're deficit spending and why we're deficit spending into the future as well, as well as the fact that we're being very conservative as to the, um, gap funding that we're expecting.
Would it be okay not to call it deficit spending and just say that we're, we're just using the reserve?
Strategically using reserves.
Thank you.
It's just to educate our children now instead of making them wait.
Yeah.
So that the younger kids can get that education today.
That's right.
Instead of waiting for those funds to come because we have the ability to spend reserves to support that now and not wait.
Thank you. Sounds so much better.
Okay, so, um, what are we doing? We're saying we're spending those extra funds now and some of them are base funds and some of them are, um, are supplemental and concentration grant funds. So what we're doing with the base funds, and I think that each one of these deserves to be said. So I'm going to say each one here. Two full-time certificated librarians. This is being added, these are added services. Seven part-time library aides, classified library aides. One resource technology teacher. One classified technology support position. Five custodians, one maintenance position, one maintenance utility position. One half additional teach prep day, which is an option, optional for the teachers that are coming back for school starts. Five additional calendar days for the certificated administrators. Additional discretionary funds and technology reserve funds. Because we're investing a lot into technology, we don't want everything to die at the same time and we won't have the monies to replace them. So we want to build a reserve so that we can continuously-